Our five-year financial outlook is to our citizens and so that they can look at it, they can study it. And we won't have any public comments today. I think today needs just to be a little bit of a working session for us, but the public will have plenty of opportunities to make any comments about our financial outlook. So, and also for all those that are watching at home, this particular PowerPoint that we're going to show tonight is on our website, so you can dive into it all you want and look at the numbers, and we certainly want to hear your comments on it. So, I'm going to go through here, I'm going to get a couple of pages deep, and then I'm going to ask Jason to come up and say a few words about financial status of our electric company, and then we'll continue through. I'm going to stop the meeting if it's still going at 6 o'clock, which is going to be a one-hour meeting, and if we can get it done in 30 minutes, that's fine too. So, you know, I think it's our responsibility as managers and professionals to take this step, which is a little bit unusual, I think, for us to really look five years deep into our future and try to anticipate where we're going to be and give you that information so that you can make the decisions that, and we can make the decisions that we were hired to make. So, that's why our staff and our committee, about five or six of us, have worked on this for the last two months. We're actually two or three weeks later of getting it out to you than we wanted to, but it is what it is, and so we'll just, we'll deal with it. So, with that, let's go to the first page. You know, what I want everybody to realize is, you know, when we were working on the budget back in October, we were working with a projected revenue of 58.9 million and expenses at 60, and that we were going to have to pull 1.15 out of our fund balance. Well, of course, the 1.15 is not going to change, however, you know, our fund balance, what we thought it might be has changed to the good, which I'll show you over in a couple more pages. If you'll, you know, the rule of thumb is that we shouldn't ever have less in our savings account than 10%. Karen would love 12 to 15, and I would too, but 6 million is about as low as I'll ever be comfortable going without making some drastic cuts. So, I think that, I think if we are prudent with the taxpayers' money, then we need to try to all keep that $6 million fund balance in the back of our minds. On the next page, you know, we had to make some assumptions when we were setting up this five-year budget predictions, and as you see, we're projecting a 1% growth revenue every year in these five years and a 2% expense growth per year. Could both of those be conservative? Yeah, we might have a little bit more revenue growth, and we might, and I bet that we will, our expenses will be more than 3%. Now, notice that these expenses do not include any raises, no raises, for any of our employees. And we also assumed that we would continue to transfer $12 million from the electric company each year, and as you'll see on the note there, that, you know, at one point in time, probably our biggest sale year was 110 million, and last year, we sold at the same level that we were selling in 1997, which was 97 million. So, that's 13 million less than our, than our best year. You know, why? You know, it's not like, you know, we had 10% of our people get up and move away, but I think it has to do, you know, we worked really hard on sustainability, convincing people to conserve energy, and of course, the newer homes that are being built are more conservative, are better, air conditioners and heaters and so on and so forth. So, I think that is why, and Jason's going to touch on it, on it too, why our sales are at 97 level. So, with that, I'm going to get off of my report and ask Jason to come up and talk about five minutes on the electric company, and then we'll go back to my report.
Mayor, I appreciate the time, and I appreciate all of you for being here and affording me just a moment to talk to you about some of the financial challenges I think the electric department's facing over the coming years as part of your five-year planning cycle. Go ahead and go to the next slide, and you can see the three big issues that I want to touch on are just conservation, which the mayor was alluding to briefly, market efficiency and distributed generation, how I see that those impact our pocketbooks and our business model. Go ahead to the next slide. This is our annual electric use that we've seen. You can see the bubble in 2010 is Caterpillar coming online. So, ever since 2005, we've seen steady decreases in consumption, except for that one bubble, and then beyond that bubble, you can see we continued our nice slow decline in electric use. Anybody have any questions about that slide? Yes, ma'am.
Have we lost any large companies?
We have Chicopee, and comes to mind, Deluxe Video comes to mind. So, we have, that curve is probably steeper than normal, and please understand, if you look at the scale on the side of the screen, okay, because the scale starts at 850,000 megawatt-hours, it makes the slope look steeper than what it is. But we're talking about from our peak system use, we're down about 13%, but during a relatively short period of time, we're 13% down on our electric use. That's a good thing. That's what we want to do as part of conservation. You know, we want our customers to get more use out of their electricity. It's good for the environment, it's good to preserve national stockpiles of fuel, and all the good reasons that we want conservation, but it's something that we need to keep in mind as part of our business planning process. So, and those are two of the points that I hit, and Mayor touched on the point that this is the, last year was our lowest year of sales since 1997. We do have lower energy costs, we have lower costs for our customers, less environmental impact. We just need to make sure that our business model is accommodating this decline in units of sale that we're seeing. Go ahead. As far as market efficiency goes, these have been our power contract prices. You know, there's that real ugly spike there in 2007 where our wholesale power cost really jumped through the roof. They were pretty stable prior to that, staying under $40 a megawatt-hour. Since 2007, we've seen a nice decline. We don't have any reason to expect that we won't continue to see that decline. I think it's going to flatten out, but we're going to see, I think, be able to manage lower costs into the future, hedge our risk, run a responsible business, and we shouldn't see a spike like that again. So, once again, just as our conservation efforts are working, our efforts to reduce our cost of power, that's working also, but as our costs decrease, certainly there's the expectation that our rates will decrease as well. So, we're selling less units of electricity, and you need to be aware of that, and market efficiency is going to press us to sell at a lower cost per unit. And when you put those two things together, that means a decline in revenues for the foreseeable future. It should be a manageable decline, but there should be a decline in revenues for the foreseeable future, and we need to make that a part of our planning model. The other thing that I want to touch on, just because the outgoing President of American Public Power said it's the biggest thing that's facing the electric industry right now, is distributed generation. It's an entirely new world in the world of distributed generation. The VA recently installed a 1.2-megawatt solar array within our footprint, and that's going to drop our sales. We're going to sell less power because that array is within our footprint. The biggest looming question is, when will solar become really economically affordable? Solar's spreading right now because people are just committed to that philosophy, or they're having government subsidized programs that are advancing that philosophy, but it's very expensive. Solar projects are very expensive. A lot of experts are saying that we're going to hit what's called the price parity point, somewhere in the 10- to 15-year windows, when most people are forecasting it to arrive, but that's the point in which a consumer is going to be able to install solar on their own home or their own business and get their electricity from the sun versus buying it from either us or whatever utility might be serving them. And it's a real game changer, you know. There's a lot of discussion in the industry about how do you manage that, because now you're not talking about a downward shift or a downward slope in your, in your sales curve, you're talking about shifting the entire sales curve downward. I don't think that we're ever going to be at a point where people don't need to be connected to the grid. They need reliable power, they're always going to need reliable power, they're going to want us to be there providing that service, if for no other reason than the sun doesn't shine at night. And it, so it's good for us to be there, and I think that our services are going to be needed, so we just need to be, to plan for a way where we will provide for those services in the future. This is just an extra slide I want to show in, just to give you the magnitude of how solar generation is going in the country right now. That spike's pretty steep, and it shows the amount of solar generation that's being installed across America, even at the price point that it's at today, and it's a high price point. $4,000 a kilowatt-ish in that price range, it's very expensive, and you still see that those, those projects are pushing out quickly across the country, primarily in industries where the cost of power is much higher, like on the, in California and on the East Coast. Go ahead. So, as you consider our future financial plans, please give consideration to the challenges that are facing the electric department, because we are so interwoven. We've been financially interwoven since the moment the electric department existed, and it has been that way forever, and it's been a mutually beneficial relationship, but we're going, we are facing reduced volume of sales, we're facing reduced price per unit of sales. We have a potential major reduction in sales due to distributed generation that may be coming in the future. So, our business model's going to have to start migrating to one that's more sustainable, in my opinion. I think we need to modify our rate structure, the way that, the way that our rates are set up, so that we recover more of our expenditures and our service charges. We need to reduce our debt, we need to get on top of it and reduce our debt to reduce that fixed cost burden, and I would like to see us migrate to a transfer policy that's percentage-based rather than fixed-dollar-based. Makes it a little more challenging for the city to go through the budgeting process. It's always easier when you've got a fixed-dollar amount that you know that's there for you to budget on, but it makes it more difficult when you're, when you're moving with a changing target, as far as our sales goes, when we have a fixed target, fixed amount outlays versus percentage outlays. So, those are the things that I would encourage you to consider.
Thank you.
That's all I had, subject to your questions.
Any questions for Jason? Bruce? Debbie? Beth? Sorry. Beth?
I'd like to first one. As you're researching, when you look at other cities with electric departments the size of ours, do you see other ones facing these same challenges?
I think it, it, it's not just our city, it's every utility, I think, is facing these challenges. There are some that can manage it more internally, large vertically-integrated utilities can manage more of their challenges internally, but I think whether they're co-ops or IOUs or cities, they're, they all have concerns about distributed generation, how that affects their bottom line. Everyone is seeing conservation efforts kick in, and they all say, yay, but now, you know, how's that work in the business model? Because the business model wasn't geared for that. TVA, last year, saw their lowest consumption year in a long, long time. It's widespread, so we're not alone in it. I read a report this morning, a lengthy, well-written report that addressed all of these issues just on point. Ms. Ross?
This is not going to be popular, but in most businesses, when you have a decrease in sales, you start looking at your staff and you start cutting back and everything. Have you looked at that? I know that it takes a certain amount, no matter how much business you do, but are there areas that you possibly may have to cut back at, or that are no longer needed, or?
Well, and, and you know, we started that process with our quota ordinance, and we're fortunate that we have a city that has, that's very supportive of their employees across the board, and certainly we're supportive of ours, and you don't want to look at anybody who's given you a lot of great service and tell them, so sorry, we don't have a job for you anymore. With smart meters, we don't have meter readers anymore, but we sat down with them at the very beginning of this year and said, you know, we're not going to have meter readers, but by saying that today instead of 10 months from now, we can tell you by the end of the year, you know, we need to find you another position. They get hiring priority on every position that's in the city that comes available. So, I think, yes, we have to look internally, to answer your question directly. Yes, we have to look internally, we have to be more efficient, we have to, but there's a compassionate way to go about doing that, and I think that that's the road that we're trying to follow.
Okay. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
The other assumption that we're getting ready to reflect on the next page is that we're going to continue to use reserve funds to balance the budget, okay? So, these numbers you're going to look at on the next page are going to reflect that we are pulling that, those monies out of our fund balance to, to give a balanced budget. Okay, if you'll look here, this starts in 2015, so nine months from now, our fund balance should be 7.25 million. Now, this is, you know, we were anticipating our fund balance being, when we were doing the budget back in October, that we were anticipating that fund balance to be 6. So, once we cleaned up and finished out 2013, we picked up that 1.3 or 4 million dollars, which is good news. So, as you can see here, without getting into the weeds much, if we change nothing and our expenses go up two, or our income goes up one, at the end of 2017, our fund balance is going to be exhausted, and then all of a sudden, we're going to go directly into a $3.7 million deficit. So, that can't happen, and I won't allow it to happen, I don't think y'all will either, because at that point in time, if I had to bring you a budget and cut $3.7 million out in, at one time, then it would be massive layoffs, you know, for our city, because 75% of course of our expenses are personnel. So, what I'm going to have to do, you know, I mean, I'm really going to have to plan two years in advance at least, and possibly do a hiring freeze, so that if nothing changes in 2018, I don't have to go fire 100 employees, and probably three, four of them would be police officers. So, that's what makes all these numbers important, because we have to start planning now, even though, wow, that's, you know, that's 2018, that's four years from now. We can't wait until four years from now to start managing our money better. So, that's why these numbers are so important for, for all of us to look at. On the, the next page, what I wanted to do is make sure all of y'all understood some of our debt. It doesn't include any debt to electric company, this is all, you know, city debt, and most of them I'm not concerned about. The 2016, where we've got that $2 million note, I'm hoping that, as you'll see in the numerous city projects where we pay a million dollars in 2015, will that end, so we can probably move that down to cover that, the final payment on the, on the radio system. So, next page, you know, some of these were requested by the council. We went around and looked at like-sized cities and surrounding cities to look and see what their sanitation rates are. Our sanitation rates, of course, are zero, and then you can see the others, you know, Little Rock is $24. I always like to look at Fayetteville, because I think they're a progressive city, and they're about the same size as we are, and theirs is $20. So, and then below that is if we introduced a sanitation fee, what that particular fee amount would raise on an annual basis. On the next page...
Yes, sir.
Someone, I don't remember who it was, said that because we had done a sales tax in the past with the premise that we were removing the sanitation fees from the folks in lieu of them getting the sales tax, that we could not bring a sanitation fee back as long as that sales tax was in place, and I don't know whether that's true, I would not answer him on that.
I think I can answer that. The ballot title didn't say anything about that the sanitation fee would be waived, and councillor, help me.
Mayor, I looked at the legislation that removed the sanitation fee, and the legislation said that because we were passing, or anticipated they would pass, the, the sales tax, the sanitation fee would be removed. Section two of that says that if the, the sales tax ever disappears or ever goes away or is ever repealed, then automatically the sanitation fees would come back. Nowhere in that legislation, and I've got a copy on my desk, does it say that because you have a sales tax, you can't impose...
So, it's not prohibitive?
It's not prohibitive, yes.
I just wanted to make sure, because I was starting to get that rumor circulating a lot, and I just wanted to, for the folks who are listening, to understand that, that yeah, that may have been part of it, but it's not prohibitive if we go ahead and go forward with something like this, because of that sales tax.
Because I was around during that period, you know, part of the incentive to pass the tax, of course, was the commitment to not have a sanitation fee, and we said, you know, if you will, you know, if you will help us pass, we will do this. That was 2000...
1999.
Yeah, 2000.
The election was February 2000?
Yeah.
Or March 2000?
So, that's, things have changed.
Yeah, that was 14 years ago. Look on the next page, the chart there that shows in 1999, our sanitation expenses were 2.7 million, and last year, it was over, a little over 5 million. So, that's why, that it's starting to hurt. $5 million a year is, is a pretty large debt expense that, that we have. The chart below that, the dollar figures there, we pretty much know that if there was a penny sales tax, that it would raise approximately $16 million a year. Some years it's been a little less, some it's been a little more. And then on the last page, we did the same comparison of mostly the same cities, Benton, Texarkana at 2.5 cents, and Fayetteville at two, Fort Smith at two, Jacksonville, Springdale at two, and Little Rock 1.5, and then, of course, we're at the very bottom at 1%. Note of order here on our 1% that 5 million of that 1% goes straight to the sanitation department, and 4 million of that goes to capital. So, basically, only $7 million goes to the general fund to fund operation and maintenance. So, it's really like having a half penny, you know. So, with that, what, these are some good numbers. If you want other numbers, if you think that you need something that we haven't thought about, you know, we certainly want you to let us know. Karen and her staff and our committee will work on it with you to get you additional information. You know, this is something that, that, you know, we don't need to jump quickly on, we need to think about it and talk about it and try to figure out what we think's best for our citizens and what's best for the financial sustainability of the city of North Little Rock. So, with that, I'm going to shut up and let y'all, if y'all want to visit amongst yourselves and, and talk, I'll certainly try to moderate it, and, look at the clock, we've got 30 minutes to do that or, or not. So, comments? Mr. Fauch?
Or you and Ms. Scott, how soon after the closure of the first quarter will be able to get a snapshot on our revenue and expenditures? Just kind of an idea how we're running?
We generally try to close each month by around the 15th of the next month.
So, till mid-April, we'll have a good snapshot of first quarter?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Well, you know, I have been talking to some of my constituents there in Ward II, and they're quick to remind me, you know, about the sales tax, you know, and, and they would not have sanitation fees. So, the thing that I've put to them is, you know, we do need the money, and what if we had an additional sales tax? Because not only would, you know, the, some of the citizens or the citizens, citizens of North Little Rock would pay, but people coming into the city, you know, would also pay that, you know, penny. And the question that was put to me is, if the city council decides in the future to go with a sales tax, could a portion of that tax go towards sanitation in that they would not have to pay $12 or $20 per month? Could a portion of the sales tax?
Sure.
Comments? Questions? Ms. Ross?
Something that I'd still like, and I know I've mentioned this before, is monthly, we don't have to do it every city council meeting, just kind of have a report from Ms. Scott, just kind of tell us where we are and where we stand.
Yeah, I would say the second meeting of every month, we could give you a report. You know, just remember, if we're not on a quarter, then, you know, the expenses are going to be a little bit skewed, because, you know, we do expenses per quarter, but it's a lot better than it was in the past 100 years. I mean, at least we know, we're going to know, at middle of April, you're going to have a really good idea of how much money we brought in and how much money we spent.
You know, I think that's a great idea, because with her doing the presentation during city council meeting, you know, the people at home will have an opportunity to see, you know, what's going on and what's happening, you know, and to really know, you know, what our needs are. So, I, I think that's a great idea.
I mean, we, we generate that document anyway, so we see it, and if y'all want to see it, shoot ya. Ms. Ross?
And I'm not saying we don't have to do, throw up a million numbers, but you know, if we could just kind of have an executive summary, you know, where we are, where we were last year, something like that.
One pager?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and when you were giving your presentation, did you say, and y'all forgive me, I might, you know, I may have a slight hearing problem here, but did you say something to the effect that as far as the reserves go, that we would continue to tap into that? I didn't hear that, did I?
Yeah, these, these numbers on the third page over are assuming that we are pulling money out of the savings account to balance the budget every year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Which, you know, in 2018, works itself all the way up to being in the hole by $4 million.
So, that's not necessarily a good thing?
No, it's not a good thing.
Mr. Fauch?
On the revenue scenarios, the last line is there, is over, is states over five years. Is that a sunset clause that was put in there, it's just to show what it would be if we set a specific timeframe for the sales tax versus just an open-ended sales tax, or?
Ask me that again.
Okay. It says like a half cent over five years generates $40 million total. Would that be, is that to show a value of a sunset for, say, we did a sales tax for five years, and that would be sunset at five years, or? Or would this be a sales tax that would be running in perpetuity type thing?
We honestly tried, in all of our committee meetings, to not do anything political. I mean, we were trying to give you facts. So we weren't assuming that if there would be a sunset clause, you know, or not for anything. I mean, I think basically what we threw that on there, if, if you, you know, I mean, 16 million, half, 8 million, five years, eight times.
Okay. Just kind of a, just a snapshot number.
We, I mean, we'd try, every once in a while, we'd get down the weeds and, and, you know, I'd have to remind everybody that, you know, we're not here to make political decisions, we're here to get facts. And so we'd jump out of the weeds, the political weeds, and get back onto our journey. So, we didn't assume anything politically. Mr. Baxter?
Mayor, I think on one of those slides up there, you had a number that showed the fees and then what the city of North Little Rock could potentially raise. Think of right there. That 22,922 sanitation customers.
Yep.
So, if I understand that correctly, that leaves quite a few number of citizens that aren't being touched, so to speak, by this?
Well, that's 22,922 households.
Right. But my question is, is how many other residents are out there within the city that receive our city services that wouldn't be contributing to this number at all?
Every apartment complex.
Approximately how many units does that make up in the city?
Now, I.
Just wag me.
It's wagging you would, I bet we have 3,000 apartments?
No, that's electric.
Way more than that?
Oh, yeah.
What do you think, Jason?
I know we just looked at what was getting built, you know, the influx that was actually coming in Ward Three, you know, where we've had the apartments getting built in. I think we've got 3,000 units there.
Just on the hill?
You know, right around, you know, several blocks of apartments there. I think at least two or three times that many.
Yeah, I mean.
We can pull it off of a census, we don't have to guess at it, we can pull it off of a census. But I'd be willing to bet that we've probably got 8,000 or 9,000 units anyway.
So, with the sanitation fee, if we're going after the residential units and the rental units would not be a participant in this other, because they're, for the most part, are dumpsters and private commercial service contracts for their.
Correct.
Trash, correct?
Correct. Ms. Ross?
Something you said, if we need any number, something that I would like to see just for our information too, is, you know, we say sanitation fee, but in sanitation, you include the boom trucks, you know, you've got your green waste, you've got your, the bulk pickup. Can that be broken out as to pure household trash, which is sanitation? That's a given. Because a lot of these cities that charge these prices, they don't have the bulk pickup and everything that we do. Can we get a price, how much we are paying for the green waste pickup and how much we're paying for, what do we call it, whatever the boom truck, the knuckle boom trucks pick up?
Yes.
As far as gas, manpower, the total cost?
We can take, it'll be a real educated guess. I don't know that we could.
No, I want the real number.
(laughing).
I mean, it can wait. I don't, I mean, not now. I mean, just something, the information that you could get.
We can do labor and we can do.
Trucks and gas and insurance.
But I don't, I don't know that we could do gas and maintenance. I mean, maybe we could, we'll see.
I'm just curious, I'm curious, the total cost, what it costs the city for us to provide that service?
Yeah. You know, we were going to add a page to this report that showed everything that we did on sanitation as compared to everybody else. And it was just ridiculous how much more we do.
Oh, wow.
And so we didn't even put it in there. I mean, you know, here's, here's what everybody else does and here's what we do. And so we didn't even include it, it would just been.
And while they're getting those figures, I'd like to believe truck too, how much that cost us also. Those are the numbers I want to see.
We'll see what we can do. Ms. Robinson?
Well, I think what we should do is, fellow council members, I think we should, even in discussion in the future, try to come up with something where everyone participates. You know, in my ward, well, wards all over the city, you know, $20 a month sanitation fee, you know, on their bill may be a bit much. And whereas in the past, I probably never really thought much of it, but since I've been retired, you know, I think about every penny. So, $20 a month or $15 a month may be a bit much for some folks throughout the city. So, I think that if we were able to come up with something and where everyone could participate, whether they lived in an apartment, whether a house, whether they're visiting the city, I think that that would probably be best for the city. And yeah, I'm talking about a penny tax, you know, would be best for the city and would generate more revenue, is what I'm thinking. Because, you know, some folks just can't afford that additional $15 or $20. And in order to make a difference, I've got a promise in there, but anyway, in order to make a difference, you know, they're going to have to pay a pretty good penny, you know, in order to make a difference in our budget and what we do, you know. And a penny, you know, to some folks may seem a bit much, but me, I'd much rather pay a penny as opposed to paying $15 or $20. Now, I don't know how much I'd have to spend, you know, in order to make up for that $20 if we had a penny sales tax. I don't know exactly, I'm not good with math, exactly how much I'd have to spend every month, you know, for that penny to equal out to $20 or $25. But I just want to encourage us up here, you know, let's think about folks that are retired and on fixed income and maybe, you know, increasing the sales tax by a penny would do. Now, there, one city, and I think that city was Jonesboro, I think, they had a sales tax, but I think a portion of their sales tax, .5 or whatever, went toward, you know, sanitation fees. I think, okay. So, I, you know, and I know we're in no hurry for this, that we're just kind of putting together a five-year plan, but I think that we ought to look at something where everyone in the city and people coming into the city, you know, would have to participate.
Ms. White?
There's some interesting comments there. When I think about apartment complexes being compelled to use our services, it just kind of boggles my mind how that would happen, you know. Apartment complexes, we couldn't have garbage bins to be picked up, we have to go into the dumpster business, I suppose. So there's challenges with the apartment complexes. And to add one other thing, some cities do, that charge sanitation fees, do give their senior citizens a discount. And I know that's something that is done in some places, so just that would be something if we went forward with that, I think we should explore.
The, one thing that I can assure you by the end of this year, that we will have explored almost every opportunity to cut expenses. We're really, really working on sanitation right now, trying to figure out how we can do what we do cheaper. And, you know, we've got some pretty good ideas that we're working on right now. Now, will it take us throughout most of the year to try to figure out if we're going to be able to save some? Absolutely. Harold told us yesterday, Harold Ford, our sanitation director, that he's confident that already, he says just this past month, that he thinks that we've saved $10,000 to $15,000 just on our separation of our yard waste. And that was just, you know, I mean, that's, when Harold's saying that, he's really conservative, so it might even be more than that. And we're looking at other ways to do our yard waste and other opportunities. Chief Rowland, I've met on it two or three times in the past two or three weeks. So, we're doing all we can do. By fall, we're going to be able to look you in the eye and go, we have cut the budget as lean as we can, so. Yes, ma'am.
You know, and I think Alderman Taylor, at one of our meetings, said something that was kind of like an eye-opener, you know, all those sanitation fees, there are no sanitation fees, so everything is free to our citizens. But when we go to Tupine or different places or wherever we go to dump stuff, we have to pay, you know. So, and, and, and to me, that doesn't make sense, you know, that, so we have to come up with something.
Mr. Fauch?
Just like Ms. Robinson said, now that she's retired, she's on a fixed income. And you start, when you get to that point, you have to start looking at what, what do I have to cut out? What little treats and treasures and pleasures do I no longer get to do or get to have? The city budget is kind of like being a retiree on a fixed income. We've only got this much money to play with before I can comfortably go to people and say, we need to take more of your paycheck to raise our tax rates up to one of the highest in the country or to ask them to pay more for their trash. I want to be able to look them in the face and say, we have done everything possible to cut every penny of waste out of the budget and this is the only alternative that we have to make the city function is to actually ask you for more.
Good point. Mr. Baxter?
Mayor, along those lines, you know, I've been thinking, you know, what are the free services? And that's probably actually a misuse of word because we know that part of our taxes go towards sanitation. But what free services does the city supply to its residents currently? I mean, I know sanitation, refuse, for lack of a better word, and then the yard waste, leaf vacuuming. Is there anything beyond that that we're providing to our citizens that we receive nothing in return?
Well, not on the sanitation side. I'm trying to think. Karen, can you think of anything?
Mayor, I do know that we do our energy audits. That's, that's for free, right? Obviously, and I'm trying to stay within the city, I know that your budget is separate, so I'm just looking for things. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
That's probably it.
I think so. Okay.
Mayor?
Mr. Whitaker?
Well, picking up where Mr. Fauch and Mr. Baxter were, you know, one of the things that we've taken a great deal of pride in, and something that's helped our community from, I guess, the very beginning, is our health department. And I think we're, my recollection is, we're investing about $600,000 on that. Now, if, if we turned all those responsibilities over to the state, we still would have some cost, as I recall, with our mosquito control and someone else would have to do that. So, you know, and I think probably the mayor has a good idea of that, but I want to make a couple of observations. One of the things that I want to remind you of is that there is a traditional thought that in our community, that, you know, if you have a penny sales tax, that 60% of it is paid by the folks outside our community that does not live in our community. So, that's, that's one thought. Now, the other side of this is those communities that used to shop in North Little Rock very heavily, Conway, Cabot and so forth, are developing their own shopping centers and our revenues are going to decline. I mean, it's just, it's just the way it is. Mr. Taylor and I, while in Washington two weeks ago, sat through a number of budget workshops and I, since I was a little bit late, I don't know whether you were able to talk about that or not, but there were a couple of things that came out from, from our meetings. Number one, this was announced yesterday by the highway department, the 2014 transportation funds are short. We're actually operating on 2013 funds. They'll be out of federal money in '13, so any projects that we have that are federally funded, that portion will not be there more than likely after August unless Congress steps forward and does something on a continuing omnibus bill.
Tell me about the highway trust fund?
Well, the highway trust fund and, yeah, yes. The, the other thing that, while we were there, the Congress took up some joint committees and conference committees, the taxation of goods and services sold on the internet. And while I don't think anyone is under any delusions that it will pass this year, if at all, there is the potential at some point in time that that will come about. Presently, they're estimating that it generates almost $24 billion a year. Now, we don't get all that in North Little Rock, but that is a source that we need to keep in the back of our mind that possibly might come about. And with that, I will also say, you know, even my family is buying more and more on the internet simply because of variety and simply because of the choices. But that is a strike against the folks that are, live next to us, work next to us, and support our community on a daily basis through our Chamber of Commerce and through other activities. And it's not fair to our bricks and mortar stores that support us. So, you know, I would encourage, encourage you to step forward at any point in time and advise our congressman of that. I guess that, going back to the budget sections, I know Maury's probably spent more time on those than I did, but there are other ways to do a budget. So, and he's sitting over there with his hands over his mouth, not helping me any.
I'd be glad to help you.
If that's okay, Mayor, so.
Mr. Whitaker? I sat through another session about budgeting and it means it's really not rocket science. It's, in fact, I'm going to set up a webinar with, with the company that, that put on the seminar, it's called priority-based budgeting. And as, as Mr. Carter stated, you know, before the meeting started, the first, the first thing you have to do when you, when you're trying to fix a problem, you got to, you got to figure out what the problem is. What are we trying to fix? And the priority-based budgeting is, it goes through that process as to what the problem is, where are you spending your money? Where do you think you're spending your money that you, that you think you're doing good or are we spending money where, on programs that we really shouldn't be spending money on? Are we spending money? Do, do the, do our taxpayers even want us to be doing this? So it's, it's an excellent opportunity, the webinar's free, so I'll get it set up and whoever wants to join in can and whoever doesn't, don't, and we'll just move forward from there.
Okay. And that, that goes back to, I guess, some of the, some of the things that Mr. Baxter mentioned about, you know, what are we giving away free? You know, it gives you an in-depth examination of those, those things. And then how our patrons value some of the services they're getting. Well, you know, you know, do you want to pay more for this or do you want to lose it? And those are some of the hard questions, as the mayor indicated, that we're going to have to ask ourselves by the end of the year. I think Ms. Ross has probably been through this, one of these sessions before too, as I recall, a couple of years ago, we did it. There are a number of cities that are adopting this nationwide.
And I can tell you, as we. And I can tell you, as we keep going forward, cities like Conway, Conway is getting ready to get a Sam's Wholesale Club, and a couple other large retail outlets. And, you know, of course, we don't have a Sam's, but if a person came to Sherwood to shop at Sam's, I'm, I can guarantee you that they're going to do some shopping in North Little Rock. But now, that, that Sam's, that Sam's Wholesale in Conway, there's no telling how much that's going to cut off coming from Russellville and all of those places up there that normally will come down here to go to a Sam's. So it's just going to keep getting worse and worse.
Ms. Ross?
I know it's getting close to six, but in, in the sessions that we've been to, it's called Budgeting for Outcome, and the number one thing you do is, what do you want? And that's the number one thing you've got to ask the residents, is what do they want? And it was surprising listening to other cities, some of the things that were cut, it was a shock to them actually, what the residents, what they were willing to give up.
Well, you know, I mean, we've opened up this question to everyone, and it's not, you know, we're certainly, there is no stupid suggestion, so anybody that's got any ideas or any thoughts, you know, please give them to us. We want to hear what you got to say. And I think that we all carry this back to our, our people, and visit with people and get some other opinions and thoughts. And I'm, I'm not going to set another meeting up just for this right now. I'll wait, and we'll all have some general conversations over the next 30 days and, and see what the next step of this process is going to be. So if nobody else has anything, Mr. Taylor?
Just one, I mean, do, do we have any, any budgeting processes or, or policies in place as to, do we have a reserves policy? Do we have, do we have a document that shows where all of our revenue comes from, comes from line by line? Do we get, we get this much from here, we get this much from this place, we get this much from line by line? Do, do we have that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do.
We get it every month. Are you not getting?
That's.
No, I don't get that.
That's the work that I do, and from a revenue perspective, what I do is look at historical revenues and take into account any anomalies or anything that we might be anticipating as far as increases or decreases. And the department heads submit their requests to me, to my office, and they don't know what the revenue outlook is. I, I work on that with my staff, and then we put the numbers together and see where we land. And then that's when the work began, meeting with department heads to try to, you know, identify some line items maybe they could reduce, because, I don't know if you remember or not, but when we started the budget this year, one of those numbers came together initially, there was $6.2 million of expenses higher than projected revenues. And then I also look at revenues throughout the months that we're working on the budget, because every month, I have one more month of current information to utilize.
Yeah.
But we have a line item in our budget for every type of revenue. Sales tax has its own line item, business license has its own line item, highway turnback has its own line item, property taxes, yes.
But I guess, do we have a reserves policy? Do, do we have, is there a policy in place that says, this is the number that we're going to keep in the bank?
No.
We do not.
And that's what I'm talking about. We need to come up with policies. We need to have, we need, policies drives everything. If you have a policy in place, that means this is what we're going to do. It is not how I feel, or, you know, none of that. If we have a policy that says we're going to keep $10 million in the bank, well, that's what we've got to do. And we, you know, we can't deviate from that unless we change the policy. So I just think, from my seat, I just think that we need to really look at putting some policies in place on budgeting and on how all of this stuff works. And the program that Alderman Ross and Alderman Witcher and myself were talking about does that. It puts those things in place, and that way you have a roadmap as to exactly what you're going to do. It has citizens' input, it has council's input, mayor, the mayor and his staff's input. Everybody's working on this deal together for a good outcome.
I will certainly be happy to reach out to finance directors in other cities and see what kind of policies they have in place for, you know, reserve requirements and so forth, for a starting point to what you request.
Yeah, and those, those policies are set by us, you know, everybody's sitting at the table right now. And, you know, if we decide that we want to say that we're not going to get below $6 million, then, you know, we'll, we'll put it in stone. But, you know, we change it. You know, I mean, that's the bad thing about it. You know, I mean, it's not like it's, we say it and it's going to be that way forever, because the next council the next year can come back and go, well, let's take that off, or let's raise it, you know, let's move it to seven, or let's back it down to five. So, you know, we, staff and mayor's office, you know, our policy is 10%. And if y'all want to raise or lower that policy, then sure. I mean, we, we love to have guidelines to work through, you know, I mean, so, you know, we, we will appreciate any policy that the city council approves, we'll guide, we'll follow it.
Six o'clock, let's go.
Okay, we got two minutes. Anybody else? Ms. Robinson?
Well, I just want to make a comment. I want to, want to compliment you, Mayor, and your staff on, you know, trying to put together a five-year plan, because most businesses and, you know, especially large businesses, that is what they do, is they put together a five-year plan. And so, and, and I just want to compliment you all on that.
No, thank you.
Because that's progress for us.
Thank you. We're, we're trying to treat you just like what you are. We are the board of directors of a very, very, very large company, you know, so we have to treat it as such. And we've got some professional staff that helps me, and, and I'm certainly proud of them too. They've worked hard. Okay, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody at home.